I would call to order the Wednesday, August 11th, 2021 Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Scales. Commissioner LaVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Here.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Here. We have a quorum. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And sir, while I have you standing, everyone who testifies has to be sworn in. So if you would, raise your hand and swear that everything you testify before this board tonight would be the whole truth, so help you God. Excellent. Thank you. A reminder for board members and everyone to silence your electronic devices, please. And a question, sir, have you signed in? Anyone who testifies, you can sign in when you come up to the podium. There's a sign in sheet there that's required. First item of business is approval of the minutes of the July 14th, 2021 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Clemmons.
Second, Thomas.
They have motion and a second discussion on the item. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy.
I'm staying. I was not here to meet.
Okay. I'm staying. Commissioner Clemmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren says yes, and Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. Minutes approved. The next item is open forum. I see no one tonight who wants to testify to any issue that's not on our published agenda. So we'll move on to a review of public hearing procedures. Sir, the procedures for the public hearings, we are the public hearing arm of the village board, so this is important. First, the petitioner is introduced and presents his or her petition, and then staff weighs in with comments, followed by any public who can comment or question. And then it's the petitioners or the commissioners' turn for comments and questions, and finally commissioners' vote. And just a reminder that our vote is recommendation only to the village board of trustees. That staff will notify you when it would be time to appear before them, and their vote is the final say. Under new business, I'm going to reverse the agenda items. We'll do the second one first, and first one second. First is PZC item 052-2021, a request from James and Mary Grace Smiths and David Smiths and Emily LaConte for properties at 531 64th Street for the following. A, a preliminary plat of subdivision to establish two buildable residential lots at 531 64th Street. And B, a final plat of subdivision to establish two buildable residential lots at the same address. And who would speak for the petitioner?
Sign in real quick, sorry. Guess I can take this off while I talk. Good evening, I'm Dave Bradley with Bradley Properties out of Downers Grove. I'm here representing the Smiths family regarding the property at 531 64th Street in Westmont. They are, I'm appearing here as a requesting a reaffirmation of the preliminary plat of subdivision and approval of the final plat of subdivision. Just to give you a little brief history on the property, the property is 156 feet wide by 294 foot deep. We originally appeared, I originally appeared before this board in 2008 on this property to get the preliminary plat approved. The board was nice enough to do it. At that point in time, the Smiths family decided that they weren't going to develop it right at that point. So we let the petition lapse. It was recorded with the county, and the county issued pin numbers for each of the lots. So that's why we're here tonight reaffirming the preliminary and asking for the final. Basically, what we did was went through the same procedure with Nalini that we did in 2008. We redid all the engineering. We provided the engineering to the village engineer who approved it. We also provided a tree preservation plan, which I believe was approved. And we didn't ask for any waivers or any special considerations when we did the petition. This is, for us, it's a straightforward two lot subdivision. The lots are 78 by, each subdivided lot will be 78 by 294. We're providing adequate detention, engineering, and so on. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, well, obviously, there's no one from the public to comment here. So first, we'll go to staff.
Sure.
Ms. Johnson.
So as Dave was mentioning, it is a reaffirmation of a preliminary plat that was approved back in 2008. It really probably does not need to go to the PZC for the final plat, but we're putting both together. We want to make sure that this is a properly platted subdivided lot so that when they go forward, they can obtain their permits without having to go through this process again. So really, it's just making sure that everything is completed. Now, the letter of credit is still going to be requested in terms of public improvements, but that'll come after the final plat is approved by the village board, and then before recording, it'll be in place, and that'll give them the possibility of then applying for permits once it's recorded. So if you have any questions about that, it's just a little bit of a technicality as to how things are going through the process. But these are existing lots. They both have the same address, 531. They're both zoned R3. They both have the same dimensions as a regular village lot. And all it is, is just calling them a platted lot rather than a parcel lot, and I'm sure the attorney can explain a little bit more about those nuances. So we just determined that it would be better to go through the process again, even though they've gotten their preliminary plat approved. They didn't go through the final plat approval, so now we have to make sure that they both go together because there is a stipulation in the zoning code that if something is approved as a preliminary plat, it needs to be approved with a final plat within 12 months. So that didn't happen, obviously, 2008 was a long time ago. If you have any questions?
Can we have an explanation between the plating a lot?
Well, the village requires, if you're going to divide property into two or more lots, that you have to follow what's called the Land Development Code of the village, which is the subdivision ordinance of the village, which requires plat approval. So there is a state statute with exceptions. It's called the Plat Act, and there are exceptions that allow you to split off land where there's no new easements for access required, and the land is of a certain size. But that, if, that's usually done if, let's say, you're transferring 10 feet from your lot and giving it to your neighbor or something like that. The village doesn't use that process or approve that process when someone's creating two buildable lots. They have to go through the subdivision process, do all the stormwater improvements that are required and other public improvements that are needed.
Okay. Thank you, I'm a newbie.
Yeah, no, great question. While I'm talking, I do have a question, I guess, for the applicant. There's a, I can't read if it's 38-foot or 35-foot building line shown on the plat.
Okay.
Which is fine. It's just that I can't tell what that dimension is. Here.
Are you looking for the setback line?
Yes. Well, it's either 35 or 38 feet. And the reason I bring it up, it's fine to show that on a plat, but if any one homeowner wanted to build closer than that setback line that's shown on the plat, let's say they wanted to build at 28 feet for some reason, let's say there was some heritage tree that they wanted to save in the back of the house, so they wanted to push the house forward. Because this is shown on the plat, this building setback line, you have to get the consent of both property owners because both property owners are bound by the plat and any restrictions that are listed on there.
Sure.
And so I know when I advise private clients, I tell them, never put a building line on a plat because, let's say you're doing 100 lot subdivision, you need all 100 lot owners to agree.
Yeah, that would be difficult.
And it's not a requirement of the village that you show a building setback line, so I would think you're free to remove that if you want, but if you want to leave it in.
No, we will remove it.
Many people leave it on there. So it's up to you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, John, interesting point. Commissioners, Commissioner Sharp, why don't you start? Do you have a comment, question?
No, I think it's straightforward. I don't have any additional comments.
Commissioner LaVoy?
I think it's just administrative in nature, I'm supportive of it, but I did have one question for Mr. Zemanak, and that is that, you know, any motion that we make to either approve or disapprove, probably approve, depending on what the law about says, I want to make sure that we give them the opportunity, if staff needs to deviate from the code regarding tree preservation, like they've done on other projects, we give them the leeway to do that in our motion, so they don't have to come back for a variation to the tree ordinance.
Well, without knowing what the development plans are, it's kind of hard to say, we'll let you figure it out. The village does have a standalone ordinance, that's a heritage tree ordinance.
Right.
And that would have to go, any waivers or variances from that ordinance go straight to the village board.
So we don't have to see it. I'm just trying to prevent the hardship on the applicant.
No, it would not come back to you unless they end up moving a house within a setback, and then it would come back to you for that.
Yeah, in that case, I have no questions, and I'm supportive of the applicant and the application here.
Commissioner Clemmons?
No additional questions, I'm supportive.
No questions. Let's support it.
No question.
Well, sir, I'm saying, Bill, it seems straight administrative, and I'm in favor as well. So the chair would entertain a vote to a motion to approve.
Sub move, LaVoy?
Second.
Motion.
And is this to approve A and B together?
No, I think we need to have separate votes, don't we?
Okay, you can do it either way.
So I'll.
For A, then.
Let's go paragraph A, a preliminary plat of subdivision to establish two buildable residential lots.
Who, who motion?
I did.
Motion, LaVoy?
Second.
Sharp? Roll call.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. And paragraph B, a final plat of subdivision to establish two buildable residential lots at 531 64th Street. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. LaVoy?
Motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Who is the second?
LaVoy.
Second is.
Either one.
LaVoy is second? Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
I got you, right?
Okay, sir, you have our approval, and staff will notify you when you be scheduled to appear before the village board. Thanks for coming and good presentation. Next item under new business is PZC 103-2021, a request from Community Development Department regarding the following. A zoning ordinance text amendments to the Village of Westmont Code to create definitions and regulations for beauty salons, barber shops, and related businesses. And we have village planner Nalini Johnson to present.
Okay, good evening. My name is Nalini, I'm the planner. So we are basically looking at a proposed text amendment to modify the used tables related to beauty parlors and barber shops. So we have faced a proliferation of beauty salons, and in going to the Community Development Committee of the Village Board of Trustees, we were kind of asked to, you know, make some changes to this because of the, I'll show here a list of businesses in the B1 district that are hair salons and beauty parlors. So the total, I think there are about maybe one or two per block, and we have quite a few that are coming online. So the proposal is to remove the special use permit requirement and to, at the same time, add separation distance requirements between each of these license types. So instead of just looking at hair salons, we're looking at hair salons, nail salons, esthetician, I don't know what that word is, esthetician places, basically skincare. So in 1985, the state put together a statute that covers all of these different license types. So they issue licenses for cosmetology, for estheticians, for hair stylists, for barbering, they call it, and different things like this. So the idea is that anything in that category is allowed in this particular land use type. However, we want to make sure that we don't have a proliferation of the same type of license. So under all of the, under the 1985 Act, individuals can become licensed as cosmetologists or nail technicians or different things. So this would allow a little bit of diversity within that category, but however, discourage the same type from being located adjacent to the same type. I don't know if I'm making it clear. I think it's sounding complicated, but it really is simple. So the idea would be, you have a hair salon, and you are not, the proposal would not allow another hair salon to locate within 1,000 feet of that salon. However, there could be a nail salon, I mean, we're talking about hair salons, there could be a nail salon next door that would be exempt from that 1,000 linear foot requirement. So the separation distance would be between license types. And the way that it's worded is under, by creating a special condition, number 18, such use may be permitted where there is a sufficient distance separation in the district of at least 1,000 linear feet, as measured from main entrance to main entrance, between establishments offering the same licensed service. I think, I'm hoping that that conveys what we're trying to say.
Because there are separate licensing for each of those aspects of it.
Right, so they have their own separate licensing, their own separate courses that they take, and, you know, different considerations and training.
There'd be 1,000 feet between hair salon and then, but nail salon can go next door, but they can't have another nail salon for another 1,000, right? 1,000 between each of the same type.
Right. That is a proposal.
No, no, I'm sure you covered it here, and I don't recall. Barbers, barbering is hair salon, right?
A hair salon.
Yeah. Because.
We didn't want to say beauty salon, we wanted to make sure that the barbering was covered, and I thought, well, let's call it hair salon. But yet, we wanted to make sure that nail technicians and skincare were, you know, was covered by the same categories, so that would be under beauty salon. So the idea is to create a catch-all phrase that is a little less obsolete, you know, or dated, but yet covers all of these different types. So it excludes massage parlors, it excludes tattoo parlors, it excludes laser removal, and things like that. Only whatever's covered under the 1985 Act. So therefore, the definition includes IDFPR licensed, you know, beauty salons and so on. That would exclude anything licensed by public health, such as laser removal, which is more of a medical grade, would exclude tattoo parlors, which are also covered under body art licensing. So that's how the definition is trying to create a catch-all, but yet excluding certain types.
Now, is there, if they're at the present time, two, right next door to each other?
Yes, so.
It's all right, and because pre-existing, preceded them?
So there are two things with that. Because the beauty salons currently require a special use permit, then, you know, it carries with the building or with the property. So therefore, if, say, a beauty salon, which we're not going to name names, it's all generic, a beauty salon decides to leave, and then within 12 months, you could have another one move in. The current proposal would remove the special use permit requirement, which would bring it back to just applying the non-conforming rules. But that's for the future, and that's already in the code. So the ones that are already on CAS are protected because they have special use permit designation, so.
So adding on to that, so, okay, so for example, say a salon is currently there, so just so I can understand that, because I have two questions, is, so right now, that, say salon A left at 1,000 Cass Avenue, so, okay, so say that they moved out.
Right.
Then another salon wanted to move in 12 months, 24, 36 months, you know, later. Can they do so, or they cannot, because that's how the building is set up?
That is a very good question, because at that point, you would be looking at the separation distance requirements.
Okay, that's, okay.
And so maybe the one adjacent to it is eligible, but it's not configured the right way, and that is definitely a consequence, or maybe an unintended consequence of something like this. So that's a very good question.
Okay, so with that question, because then, you're also, you know, a comment I have is, you are, if there's a business owner, and we have issues, you know, sometimes filling the spots, so if a business owner, someone that owns the building, then they would have to redo it and then reconfigure the whole place because another salon would come in, that would be a hardship, my comment would be, it'd be a hardship to them. But also, you say within 1,000 feet, do we restrict this for other things, or we're just going to do this for this? Because, you know, you know, right now, my understanding is you could have two restaurants by each other, you could do two barbecue places by each other, or whatever, why are we pulling this out?
Okay, you had two questions there. So the first one, I'm going to address again, because I think you also said that if a business leaves, and within 12 months, could somebody else move into that same building? Yes, they could if they have a special use permit. If they don't, then it would be only within the 90 days. But if it was more than 12 months, and it was configured as a salon, but a new business coming in would be too close to another one, then you're right, it would not be allowed. So I just wanted to qualify those two things. So it depends on the timing and also the distance. The second question, having to do with the market, I guess, is what you mean. This is why, the only driving force behind it is that, you know, as retail is leaving, and we're replacing retail with service, you know, services, businesses, what happens is now you're having a prolifer, like a glut of all of these types of uses. Now, they're very low cost, low overhead, they're very easy to open. So even if, you know, I don't know what the rents are compared to the income, I'm not going to get into those details, but apparently, they're simple to open, you know, in terms of the business planning and all of that. So the competition aspect is something that I think we're not going to discuss here because it's not something that the PZC is really meant to discuss. At the same time, there is an effect of creating this retail mix. I think I would just say in terms of allowing for a diversity of uses, and right now, we don't have that. So if there's an alternative, maybe we could, you know, come up with something, but this is the idea behind something that was requested of us to consider. At the same time, the B1 permit, in and of itself, is meant to, you know, control for these things, you know, for the retail mix. So the idea would be that the village board would say, oh, there are too many, oh, we can't, you know, have anymore. But is there a threshold? So maybe that's something we look at. Out of, say, 300 business tenant spaces, out of 300, let's say, can we have 40% be hair salons? I don't know. What is the threshold? So how do we control it without controlling it? I don't know.
Isn't, you were talking about a threshold, how many can.
As an alternative, yeah.
Wouldn't that just normally happen, just by, some are going to make it, some aren't going to make it, and if they don't make it, if they do make it, they're there?
Well, we do see that with what happened a couple months ago, where we had a salon emerge from another salon establishment, and then they moved across the street, and then the original salon, you know, didn't make it as well. So that is a natural, you know, market force effect. And I don't have an opinion about that right now, it's not something that, you know, is, for me, it's not germane to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The idea is, do we want to have spacing requirements for these types of uses, and what would be the basis? If we feel, or if you feel as a commission, that there is no basis to control the spacing for these uses, then that's something you could recommend. Or if you feel that there is, and what is that basis, then we can talk about that, too.
What's the difference between spacing requirements and creating a number, saying we're limiting this type of business, we don't want more than 25 barber shops within
I mean, the only difference is the, the character of a block. You know, let's say you have one block that has five barber shops. And I've seen places like that, and it does happen. And it's pretty interesting. You'll have a barber shop, and then you'll have a restaurant, and then another barber shop. And they've been there for a long time, so, you know, I mean, it does happen, and the only thing that changes is maybe you don't have, it's just a quality, or the, the quality, in terms of quality, I mean the character of a block or an area, if you have a lot of these collected in one area versus another. From a planning point of view, honestly, I don't know what the difference would be, you know, but from an economic development point of view, that's, I think, what the question is, you know. Is it, is it, is it something the planning commission should weigh in on, is a question to you, regarding, you know, the number of services versus retail establishments, or is that something that, that we want to stay out of? Or, you know, I don't know. At this point, it's opened up into that question. I think you brought that up, so.
Up until now, we've tried to control revenue inflow with zoning. By giving a B1, you want retail in there. As our main street died down, it just happened, not by accident, it was a reason, easy startup, high need, service came in, service businesses came in. And it continued. I think there's a underlying reason here, is that we would like to, especially when we have our downtown increasing the population greatly with the two huge projects here, we would like to give a little bit more diversity of retail in the downtown area. And I think this is an attempt at that, that's my thought.
Retail? It's an attempt at adding retail?
Like to see some retail in there-
You'd like to see more retail.
Between all these services.
Right.
They're not, they don't generate.
Now, typically, when folks come in and ask for a special use permit for this type of use, we do mention retail, and we ask, are they going to be selling something at the front, you know, part of the store, you know, and, and so, they do try to do that, understanding that that's one of the goals of the B-one permit. Another thing for you guys to consider with this particular proposal is, by removing the special use permit, are we not encouraging the service sector, even though we're providing for spacing requirements? Just a question. Do we wanna keep, so, I guess we have three options. We can either keep things the way they are, we can, uh, remove the special use permit and add spacing requirements, or we can limit, you know, provide a limit to the number of service, you know, but then it's arbitrary, I don't know. I mean, how do you come up with that, unless you do some kind of analysis, and, and another thing to consider, is as these two buildings start getting built up, and developed, and people start moving in, maybe that market is going to shift naturally to serve other needs that will be going on. And maybe, there will be a salon on the ground floor of one of those, and it'll be a huge, I don't know, major, you know, type salon slash school.
But they won't be allowed to be next door to each other, though.
Right. Um, so, yeah, those are good questions. Now, another thing about these, though, if you have a restaurant, and you have a hair salon, and you have a medical use, all of those tend to kinda work together, because somebody goes, takes an appointment, and someone's with the family, and they go off and get a haircut, or they go and eat something. You know, all these things do work together, when there's a diversity of services in retail, and they all, you know, even though the service'll move in, and they're not generating retail, they're generating traffic that, you know, feeds into retail. So, there are a lot of things to consider. Now, is that something that the Planning and Zoning Commission wishes to dive into, and, you know, look at? Or are we going to, you know, recommend, or are you going to think about maybe, um, limiting the scope of the commission to, you know, um, I don't know, that, that's just a question. What is the scope of the commission?
Well, you know, I, I just had a, a question, because the, the write-up says, this, uh, request came from the Community Development-
Committee.
-Committee of the Village Board. So, the entire Village Board, uh, basically sits on that committee. And so, they gave direction to you, um, identifying a problem, and saying, try and solve this problem, correct? And, and was this concept, um, conveyed to them about limiting beauty salons by, let's say, a distance separation requirement specifically?
No, that was their idea. By how much was our side of saying, okay, let's say a thousand, because that's typically, you know, what we do with other businesses, it's a couple of blocks' distance, you know? But the idea of, of a separation distance, or a distance requirement, came from the board.
Okay. So, I, I just wanna put the request in context, that the Village Board has identified what they perceive to be a problem, and is asking for your help in trying to solve the problem. So, I know you threw out an option, don't do anything if you don't think it's warranted, and you have every right to say, no, we don't think these regulations are warranted, but I know the Village Board is looking for your help.
And there's, it, if we, if we, either by using the distance, or by it saying, we can only have so many within, there's so many square feet or so, um, are both those, would they both stand the test of-
I'm, I'm quite positive they would, because you're not, um, so, you can't try to restrict competition through zoning, that's not a proper factor to consider. But here, it's, it's not directed at a specific business, it's directed at an entire category of businesses. When you look at what the state did with the adult-use cannabis regulations, they put in a distance separation requirement into the state statute for those dispensaries, because they didn't want them clustered together, they felt like they should be-
We did it with the gambling-
Spread out.
Two.
So, it was also done with the video gaming. And you see there are other distance requirements, such as, you have to be located so far from a school, or s- have a, let's say, a hundred-foot separation, uh, from a residential district. So, distance requirements, uh, are a part of zoning, uh, from time to time, when warranted. About fifteen years ago, or, yeah, I think it was about fifteen years ago, there was a proliferation of brick-and-mortar bank buildings in a lot of communities. And I know in Geneva in particular, I think it was along, God, I forget what road now, but they had a nice re- busy retail stretch, that all of a sudden, all of these banks started popping up, and they had the exact same discussion you guys are having now, only about banks. And so, they came up with restrictive, uh, zoning, to limit the number of banks that would go into what they viewed as more prime retail areas, again, trying to get a mix that they thought was appropriate for your community. So, if you want to impose a separation requirement like this, um, I haven't researched the issue since I saw this come through yet, um, I will before I guess the Village Board, but I'm quite positive it is permissible. Long answer to an easy question.
Commissioner LaVoy, what do you think?
I'm not, I'm not in favor of overregulation, I think everybody knows that. You know, if, if a salon is already existing, and there's somebody else that wants to come and build a salon next to it, and their, their business plan and their business model is such that, uh, it doesn't necessarily impact anyone else, and they know that, and that's why they're coming, they should be able to do it. If somebody wants to object to it, the existing business, they can sit right there and object to it. Um, I'm not a fan of regulation, I've seen, like, I'll give you an example, in Plainfield, right on downtown Plainfield, there's a, a distance restriction for any kind of establishment that would carry a liquor license to a school. Well, right on the corner, the school happens to have ownership of a piece of property, there's no school on it, but because the school owns it, within a thousand feet, there can't be a restaurant because of that law. And I'm just not in favor of, of overregulating it, I'm okay with the way it is. And who are we to say, a thousand feet is a thousand feet? Why isn't it five thousand feet, or a hundred feet? You know, I think, by, another point that was made is, is, this is gonna happen automatically. Other businesses are gonna come in to service to people downtown, and it's gonna happen by fruition, it's not gonna happen, and overregulating it is not the answer. I think the answer is just let it happen. Uh, no, I'm not in favor of it at all. Because then, then the other problem that we have is, are we regulating the actual person that's licensed to carry the cosmetology license, or whatever it is, the tenant, or are we regulating the, the actual owner of the property? And then we get in conflicts, well, you know, if, if an owner of a building has a, a cosmetology place, and that tenant that was in there moves, and he wants somebody else to come in, and then he's restricted, because you can't, because there's another one down the street, now we got a problem, because we overregulated it. And that, I'm just not in favor of it. It just opens up an opportunity, again, to, you know, to, to have conflicts and have issues. And then who's to say, if you, if you create this thousand-foot rule, we don't have somebody come, walking through the door saying, I, I wanna, I wanna be five hundred feet away, I want a variation? They could do that, right?
A variation on a special condition to permitted use, or one to a special use? I'm not sure about that.
Uh, they absolutely could come in for a variance-
Correct.
-um, from the distance separation requirement.
There you go.
So-
And, and so, do we wanna have another thing that's gonna have to come in front of this board to make things happen? I just, not in favor.
Or maybe they'd like, like a particular building within the thousand foot-
Correct.
And, and that, that's what they want, that, look, that address, you know? And we, and if we pass this, it, it's, no, you can't.
Out, out of curiosity, a thousand feet, you know, um, in relation to the length of a block in the village, uh, where that falls?
It's about a little short of two blocks. So, if there's a business at the corner, it would be, you know, you'd have one intersection, and then almost to the, to the end of the second block, would be about a thousand.
And another thing, too, is that we're seeing specialty things. It used to be, we used to go to the barber shop, that's all there was. Now, we have all kinds of specialties, from nails, to pedicures, to, you know, you name it, there are specialty items that fall within that category, and if we don't have a definition for all of them in there, and even new ones, uh, there could be these specialty shops that just do specific items that fall within that category, but don't necessarily compete with this place next door. So, I, you know, I just, I just see it as-
I do wanna remind-
Way too many opportunities for conflict, uh, and, and overregulating it.
So, I do wanna remind everyone that, right now, barber shops and beauty salons are required to go through the special use permit for spaces that are larger than a thousand square feet, or for the ground floor-
There you go.
-locations. And this proposal would remove that requirement, and add the separation distance, so that administratively, staff could look at it and say, oh, you know, this is allowed or not allowed, without having to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission and all that, to go, you know, other than the B-one.
And, and to your point, and to get back to the competition argument, if someone came in for a special use permit to open a beauty salon, which happened to be right next to an existing beauty salon, you, that's where you can't say, nope, there's too many salons, you're gonna be competing with Karma, or whoever, we're not gonna grant you the special use, because that's not one of the factors that you're allowed to consider in granting a special use.
But can we not consider retail mix at that point, even?
Uh, no. I mean, no, not really. I mean, what the courts have said is that a special use is essentially like a permitted use, but it, you're giving it special consideration, because it may have adverse impacts. And if, if you can't show that a special use at a particular location is going to have unique and adverse impacts at that location compared to any other location in the B-one district, you're kind of hard-pressed to deny the special use permit. So, just saying, there's too many salons, that's not a reason, a valid reason for denying a special use request.
How many salons are there, hair salons are within that two block?
So, in your report, um, we have a list of salons that were, the list was compiled by the Chamber of Commerce, and so, we have business listing by name and address, we have ten, but since that list was compiled, we have another, um, business that moved in, it was a skincare salon, um, estheticians' license salon at thirty-six South Cass. So, right now, we have eleven, and then, the bottom section shows you where-
Here.
-along the B-one corridor, they're located. So, we have two on the two-hundred block, one on the one-hundred block, three on the zero-to-fifty block, and then, one on the one-hundred-to-one-fifty-five South Cass block. And then that additional one, which is actually falling on the fourteenth to forty-four, so we have three on that block. And most of them are hair salons, or beauty, you know, hair salons, and one of them is a skincare salon, and then there's an additional nail salon to the south, next to Alessia, or actually, adjacent to Cuts and Such, no, wait a minute. Oh, there must be another one that was missed. So, there's one building south of Alessia that has a nail salon and a hair salon, or a barber shop, side by side.
I'm thinking, right across the street, the Randall Brent Salon, uh, that, what else could that space be but-
That's the number one.
-a hair salon? Now, you know, if that vacated, uh, the landlord wouldn't be able to do, I mean, it'd sit empty forever.
Actually, when I first started, I, I gave him permission to move in, because I wasn't familiar with the B-one, that's kind of my fault, because there was a hair salon there before, and, um, so, they don't have a special use permit, or a B-one permit to operate. So, you're correct, when they leave, they won't have that special use permit protection. But that is the only way, it is a very narrow storefront, this is the other reason these salons are moving in, they don't require a lot of depth. I know one of them does have that deep, um, you know, lot, or that deep building, but most of them just need a couple of booths in the front, and maybe a wash space, and a bathroom, and, and a, you know, an area in the back, but not a very large space. And if Cass Avenue wants to redevelop and attract other types of businesses, and the whole entire configuration of those lots needs to be rethought, but that's a whole other conversation. So, that is the other reason we are having this, um, this proliferation, and the idea of curbing that potentially could lead to more vacancies, which may be, you know, an undesirable effect of curtailing them, unless we have an idea of what else will take its place, which is why, the separation distance requirement proposal applies to licensed types. It's not a blanket, you know, if you have a nail salon, you can't have a hair salon next door. No, we're trying to say, look, we know that the vacancies are gonna probably grow if we don't have anything moving in, and it's one of those low-hanging fruit type of businesses that are able to quickly move in and start, you know, running a business. So, trying to balance the retail mix, it, it's a hard way to do it. So, this is kind of where this proposal is-
Yeah, and I, I think that, that the, the Village Board and the, and the Development Committee has a, a legitimate concern. And they're, you know, they would like to do something about it. And this is pretty soft compared to what you could do. So, I, 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 I would be, I would approve of it.
Okay. Would you be in approval of removing the SCP and adding a separation, or are we gonna discuss both of those separately? I mean, or the how, um, of this curbing of the proliferation, without putting undue hardship on the corridor, to then having an effect where we have too many vacancies, and just empty storefronts, like we have over here, um, on East Quincy, or West Quincy?
I don't know, it's hard to say, because we know that a lot of needs are gonna arise with the, with the coming population increase in that little area. And, um, you can, as Commissioner LaVoy says, not, not overregulate, and, and let it happen. And a lot of retail businesses will come in that aren't there now, and will probably solve the problem. So, I don't, I don't know, it's, it's a hard decision.
Good point.
I will say that the special use process-
Mm-hmm.
-um, that's in place currently, doesn't really do anything to stop the proliferation of, of these types of businesses. They've never been denied by Planning and Zoning Commission, or the Village Board, to my knowledge. It's always stated, boy, we prefer retail, but we, you know, you guys have said-
It's better than nothing, something's better than nothing.
But you like to fill the space, and you like to get traffic into the downtown, so they've always been granted. Kind of leads to the question, do you really need the special use at all? Because it's just more hoops and money for a business owner that wants to open. But if you do wanna regulate it, I think the distance requirement that's proposed is one way to do it.
I also think that, uh, that these types of businesses have a following. Like, I know, my mother has had her hair cut by the same person for a long time, and it doesn't matter if that person moves from Downers Grove to Westmont to Clarton Hills. I think that they're not necessarily geographically oriented, I think it's client-oriented. So, if somebody moves in next door, really doesn't impact their client base, because they have different levels of fees, and different levels of service, and, uh, you know, I just think it, it's gonna happen all, all on its own. I think that the objective, it's gonna happen all on its own. Because if I'm a new, newbie coming to town, and I wanna come in, and, as, as a, a business owner, I need to look at the performa, and how I'm going to get business at this location, if I don't bring it with me. And it, it's, it's not like it's retail, because retail, you know, is, is geographically oriented, uh, but these places are not. People are coming in, and, uh, you know, from, from a tax basis, I think there's, there's people coming in from outside of Westmont, for sure, going to these places, and they're bringing in outside monies into our town. So, there's a, there's a lot of positives from that perspective. So, it's, it's a tough one, and I agree, uh, but I, I do know that, that if I came in, and I wanted to do, and open up a new business, that's gonna compete with all of this, I gotta look at what my dollars are, what my expenses are, and can I make the business work? They're not just gonna come in and do it, they're gonna make sure it works.
So, I think, Ian, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, that you do see, I think, I'm thinking of Sixty-third and Cass, all those auto-related uses that are there. I mean, there is, there is kind of gluts, as you, the word you used, of uses, that I think can infiltrate into a small area to an unhealthy extent. And that, I, I don't, I don't put as much faith in the market to control all of that, like, I think zoning, a large part of zoning is trying to plan out desired uses for, for the land, and the B-one- the land, and the B one district specifically, I just read it here on the phone from the comprehensive plan, I mean, it's asking for retail, intensive pedestrian services, and restaurants. Those are the three things that it kind of says over and over again in the comprehensive plan. And what the Village Board is saying is they would like to control because there's unhealthy amount of service uses downtown. I think the, the question about licensing, limiting the number of licenses versus distance separations, I mean, if I was trying to get into that business and open up a shop, I would much rather have to contend with a distance separation than simply be told there's no licenses available for you, and you can't go for it at all. So I would rather negotiate and find a spot that works for me than be told that there's no spot for my business at all in, in the downtown.
Now, remember, again, just to, I think, I think what you're, the points you're making makes sense, and it kind of goes to what you're saying about attracting retail and the requests from the board having to do more with how do we attract more retail, and maybe a side effect is that we have too much service and all of the vacant stores are now being occupied by service businesses. But to your point, the separation distance requirement would only apply in the B one district, so it would further not curtail anyone from locating anywhere else where a beauty salon is allowed, which would be in the, you know, C one district and in the B two district where there would be no separation distance requirements.
Yeah, because they really, a beauty shop really, a location is not a huge, huge factor.
That's, that's exactly right, yeah.
I think as Commissioner LaVoy said, they have a following.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the latest one that we approved had a huge following coming from, I think, the Melrose Park, that, that area there. So they're coming all the way out here to, to do their hair. Now, if she weren't there and if she were on the south side, they would still go there, and that business could still succeed there. So I, I think this is a soft way of, of, of trying to steer a little bit of that, and, and I, I think that while it is, as Commissioner LaVoy says, probably overregulation, it's, you gotta, if you're going to do anything about trying to shape the future of your downtown, then this is, this probably would be a good idea.
I think the downtown seems to me, based on the code, that the downtown area is a little bit more regulated than anywhere else because it has a higher impact, it has more of a benefit or loss to the community depending on what happens there, so you do want to take a look at it and make sure that it's a little more controlled or at least planned out or strategized. And from that point of view, I, I think, you know, there could be a vision for the types of businesses that are there and the activities that are going on from morning till night, Monday to Friday, Saturday, Sunday, versus, you know, having one type of business that has activity only at a certain point. Some towns will have downtowns that are completely emptied out at five o'clock, you know? And so that's, the concern in other communities is that nothing is happening after five, and it's completely a ghost town, even though you have all these high rises, restaurants and everything, it's just the nature of the other activities that are going on at the same time, office uses versus a community like here where you have a mix of uses from, you know, at all hours, which is a nice thing. So yeah, I think the downtown should be controlled a little bit more in that sense. At the same time, if you start, you know, diverting these service businesses away from downtown and then they locate in the C one, or they locate in the B two, you're adding services down there, you're just kind of moving the, the situation down to another spot potentially, where now you do want the retail in the C one as well. I mean, you want it everywhere. So that's the downside of, of moving things around. But they both go hand in hand.
When we buy things, we want to buy something retail. It's just, we have to start thinking about the future because it's just not going to happen.
Right.
The, the grandiose model of a downtown has all these little mom and pop retail stores, but they're starving. Because what do we do? We order things on Amazon. So modeling the town and try to structure things into the perfect little Westmont because we want this good mix, we're not going to be able to control the mix. It's going to happen all, all the time, all the time.
And my comments too, okay, so we're going to have these apartment buildings, the people are not going to drive, quite a few of them is from my understanding, so then if they're not driving, they do need these services. And so we're, we're pulling out one of the services, and is this leading to pulling out other services? I know, like with myself, I do have a downtown business, it has services, and, you know, I have several hundred people that come downtown per month to my business, but then they also use restaurants, they go to the shops, they go down to Carly's, they go all over the place here. So I think that, you know, pulling out one particular category, I don't think is a good precedent, precedent for that. The parking, like you had addressed also about parking, you'd said it a little bit, you know, like within that, so if you have these services also, yeah, they do run into past the dinnertime, stuff like that, balancing out, it's going to solve part of the problem. If you start having everyone, you know, at night or et cetera, a type of business for that, we're going to even have more parking issues. So I think with that balance, I said, I think that helps when you have a mix with the service downtown, and people moving into these places are going to want to have services, you know?
Parents.
Because they're not going to have cars because that was part of the plan that we had addressed about the apartment buildings, you know, the one point five, et cetera, of how many people, and we had planned that they would be downtown. So that's my comment, so that's why I wouldn't be in favor of it.
So there's one more element I want you guys to think about as you go more in depth with this. The special use permit applies to the building, I believe, right? The property. So once it is granted, the property itself can contain this type of use as long as it is continually occupied with some minor vacancies of like less than twelve months, they could still, you know, have this type of business in that building. If we remove the special use permit requirement, oh, and going hand in hand with this, in real estate, typically a tenant is the one that has to build out the interior. So even if you have an owner that has a tenant moving in and puts in a salon, you know, they basically have to get all their fixtures out, and, and then a new tenant would move in, and it would be a different type of business, and they would have to retrofit the space to suit their needs. So the property owner technically is hands off in a way. I mean, they have to give their approval, and they sign the leases and, and other things. But, so that would be a difference between you have a tenant who's a, you know, beauty salon, and then you have the property owner who's, that's renting to them, versus a beauty salon that buys a building, has a special use permit, and has more of a permanence to it. They're all these different things that, that, you know, we want to consider if we get rid of the special use permit or if we keep it in, as to how the special use permit is going to the building versus a permitted use situation where someone's able to move in and out, and the building, you know, can change types of uses over time and not be as concerned about that. So I just wanted to touch on that because I think you brought, you brought something about that up before.
I think-
So I hope I didn't confuse more than-
I think you answered this already once tonight, but the, this list of ten, and now there's eleven, these are already granted special uses?
Well, some of these have been here for a long time.
Right.
So I, I wouldn't know exactly which ones have special uses.
But the twelve month rule applies to the special uses.
Mm-hmm.
And it would also apply in a similar fashion to any distance requirement. If we did away with the special use, there would still be this twelve month cutoff?
For the ones that have special uses already. But for the new businesses moving in, they would be permitted by rights, so, except for the B one permit, which that in and of itself should be the place probably where the retail mix question gets batted out. But typically, that goes straight to the Village Board, and then that consideration isn't really addressed so much.
But to answer your question, if it's considered a legal nonconforming use, let's say a salon does not have a special use permit, and they leave, and the owner wants to get another salon in there, as a, and, and they're too, they don't meet the distance separation rule, they'd be a legal nonconforming use, which if discontinued for a continuous period of ninety days or more, I believe is what it says, they'd lose their legal nonconforming status.
Okay.
So they could continue, the, the building owner could continue to rent the salons as long as there isn't a, at least a ninety day gap in occupancy.
I, I did, I, I would agree that it seems like it's a light touch because these businesses that already exist, there's a lot of them for the downtown, and they can all continue to exist, and we're still permitting more in the future. We're just limiting the distance on futures. But if everything stayed exactly as it was, all these businesses in perpetuity, there would be a healthy amount of this service type in the downtown, right? So all we're limiting by enacting this is, is limiting more than we want downtown, which is going to your point of having a, a future for what we want for the downtown. And so, yeah, we, if we're going to put stock in thinking we can shape the uses downtown, we should do that. That's my opinion.
And remember, in the future, and I, I don't want to be the harbinger of certain things, but, you know, as you have these large buildings develop, you have developer pressure to kind of push out a little bit to the side and, and start, you know, maybe acquiring other properties that might be subpar or something like that, I don't want to go into, but land assembly and things like that. All of that doesn't preclude any of that from happening. If that were to happen, you could still have, say, one lot right now that has only one use on it could potentially have two or three or four different retail spaces in some fashion. And then you have a situation where you're avoiding having two or three salons next to each other within even a smaller footprint. But that's down the line, so, or never.
Yeah, the, the licensing does allow more flexibility to, but maybe it's flexibility in the wrong direction. I mean, what you said earlier about individual blocks, like the character of one single block being defined by the uses that happen to be on it, that's what makes me lean towards the distance versus, because you could, you, you could destroy one block with just all the same use on that block, right? Now it's very limited.
On the other hand, you know, I mean, you have other places in the world where you'll have a block of different, similar things, and then it allows people to walk to that block and say, well, which one do I want to patron, you know? It's, it's like, it can become an attraction tool, you know, if it's marketed a certain way. I'm not saying that that applies for hair salons per se, but that concept is not necessarily a bad thing, depending on how it's handled.
But then the survivals, the, the survivors of that block of, of similar or exactly the same, you're going to have winners and you're going to have losers. And, and unless they just barely hang on, just enough to, to stay there, then you, then you, you may have a problem.
And healthy competition is called healthy for a reason, you know, because you have a situation where you see what your neighbor's doing, and, oh, maybe I should start doing, you know?
And the healthy wins.
Maybe I'll start accepting Visa, you know, whatever. So.
Well, I think there's no doubt that once these two big projects are completed, we're going to have a, a lot more population density in downtown in, in this B one district, and, you know, I think in that, in that sense that landlords wouldn't be punished as much as if we're just telling them, okay, you can't, if, if this tenant goes, you can't put another hair salon in, in that building, there, there's going to be other, other demands. So I guess I'm not-
Retail is going to-
Absolutely.
-being swayed by Tom and Wally and their, and their rationale here.
Well, retail is, is, Commissioner LaVoy said, is going, is changing rapidly, and there, there will be retail, but it's not going to be what we think about today. Most of it's going to have to do with food.
Then service, right, so these hair salons are selling nail products, shampoo, hair products, they're actually selling retail.
Yeah, but that's, it's, most of them, the percentage of their, of their revenue, that's a, a small percentage. Most of theirs are service.
Yeah, the service, yeah.
And so, but, um, we really would like to get some, a better mix down there, and I, and I think it will happen. It, it will happen with the, with the increased populations, and the needs of the people are, are going to have to be met there, or that, you know, especially as if they're not going to be having, everybody having cars.
Well, either cars or not, there's going to be an immediacy at a, a convenience from the location to, rather than going to park a lot, getting the car and driving to some other community or, or if, if there are places downtown to attract.
Let me, can I ask John a question? Let's say, for example, I noticed that it's, these places that we have now are pretty much what I would consider, I don't know if it's the correct term or not, but boutique oriented. They are client base oriented people that have small businesses, and they're small targets of, of different people that come as far as client base. So what's going to happen if, let's just say hypothetically, we are absorbed in our numbers, you know, according to what, what we're proposing here, and Mario Tricocci comes downtown, and they want to rent a much bigger space, and they claim that this is discriminatory against this particular use, it's not done to restaurants, not done to anything else, it's really, what is the legal perspective of that being discriminatory?
It, it's not. It's a proper exercise of your police power, which is the zoning, where the zoning power derives from, to, to regulate uses. You're allowed to regulate uses, you're allowed to have distance separation requirements, you're allowed to separate them from residential districts, and a business who doesn't meet those requirements are free to come in and ask for variance. And so then you take it on a case by case basis and may find, hey, if Mario Tricocci's coming in, and they're going to generate, boy, a lot of traffic and a decent retail aspect to their business, we'll grant them a variance. So that's how you solve that problem, I think. And, and there would not be a, a valid cause of action for discrimination. They're not in a protected class.
I see, okay.
So you're saying you could do that, put, say like a Mario, okay, even if we say yes to a thousand feet distance, then they would still be able to go, they would do that, and then you still could accept someone to come in?
They could come in and ask for a variance.
Okay.
And so the question would be then if, is, if we get a proliferation of salons coming in asking for variances, and you grant them all because you think the retail space is never going to get filled otherwise, what's the point of having the regulation? But only time would tell, you know?
Yes, there is a beam of light again.
Yeah, so it, it seems like there is a proposal on the table, and, which, which seems rational, whether you agree with it or not, I'm, I'm not judging on the merits, but no alternatives suggested for how to regulate these businesses. Seems like those that are in favor of it think this is reasonable, those that don't, don't. Do you feel like you're ready to vote on this, or do you want to hash it out more?
I think, I think that each of us has his own feeling on it, pretty well set, right? If so, then I think we should just probably vote it.
Okay, what, before, before we vote, I would point that there are six of us. If it, if it went three, three, what would be the result?
So that's not a positive recommendation, but it still goes to the Village Board, and they have the right to-
But it's not a good idea.
-do what they want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's okay, that happens.
But, and we did have it a few years ago, remember, there were five of us, and we voted three to two in favor, and it went to the Village Board, but it was not a majority of a majority. You have to have four-
Correct.
Four yes votes, and Village Board had to have unanimous-
I see.
-vote in that case, and it would not apply here.
Not unanimous, but a two-thirds vote.
I thought it was unanimous, sorry.
Certain things, like a special use, if a special use request is denied, the Village Board can only approve it by a two-thirds vote.
Didn't know any of these. We should be trained.
Well, the Chair would annotate a motion to approve PCC one zero three two zero two one, a request from Community Development regarding the zoning ordinance text amendments to the Village of Westmont Code to create definitions and regulations for beauty salons, barber shops, and related businesses. Motion?
So moved, sharp. Is that moved? Sharp?
Second.
The motion approved Sharp. Second, Van Buren. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Okay. Commissioner LaVoy?
No.
Commissioner Clemmons?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
And Chairman Mike Carmichael?
Yes.
Three-three.
Okay, well, Village Board of Trustees, once our, and they got it, punt.
You can't say that we're like yes people. Yes, not that everyone says yes to everything.
Oh, good discussion.
There was.
Before we adjourn miscellaneous items, anybody have comments? Staff, Commissioners? I'd point out, a month from today, it'd be before our next meeting, is on eleventh of September, there's a Patriot's Day ceremony. It's either at the South Fire Station or the North, I'm not sure which, but it'd be ten o'clock in the morning on Saturday the eleventh. And encourage Village participation. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn, Clemmons?
Second.
Thomas? All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.